...Monday, September the 19th, 2016, at 9:00 AM in council chambers. So are there any late items to be introduced? Okay, so could we please have the agenda adopted as printed? Thank you, Councilor Campbell, Councilor Rhodes, all in favor. Thank you. We have a delegation this morning. Mr. Ed Stevens, the Senior Development Manager for the Kelowna International Airport, is here to present a PowerPoint presentation about some, well, some very interesting things that are going on at the Kelowna Airport. So, welcome, Mr. Stevens. Would you like to come up to the microphone? Because we are not only on Granicus, but we are on East Link. No, we're not?
Not yet.
Not in the morning, just in the afternoon. Okey dokey, we're on Granicus, though, so people can watch this on their computer. So, welcome. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you for the invite. Yes, and we're ecstatic to talk about our master plan. It's exciting for us. What this is, is this is a supporting document that supports our vision to become the best mid-sized airport in North America. So, we are currently finishing up a major program right now. It's basically, it's a $92 million program, which we call the Drive to 1.6 and Flight to 2020. There's sort of two programs in one there. This is scheduled to probably finish a little bit earlier than 2020. And what we want, what we're currently working on right now is the next program for 2020 and beyond, which is aligned with this master plan. And it's, as, you know, as we're part of the city of Kelowna, it's embedded into the official community plan for Kelowna as well. So, if you can, sorry, I'm looking the wrong way.
I'm blocking, yes.
So, we started this journey in March of last year. We did a lot of preliminary development of this. We've been working on this with stakeholders at the airport and across the region. And we're just in the process right now of wrapping up the final plan. So, we've got tons of comments from various stakeholders in the region and tenants and operators at the airport, and we're scheduled to have a final report in November this year. So, what's our main driver here from, I guess, the last program that I mentioned earlier, the Drive to 1.6, was the intent is that by 2016, we would hit a cumulative number of 1.6 passengers. We actually achieved that a year earlier. And so, that's our starting point from the history. And then, our forecast, what we've done is we've taken into consideration three potential outcomes here. We've got a low forecast, a medium forecast, and a high forecast. So, we're conservatively, we think it's conservative, a lot of our assumptions going forward is based on the medium forecast. A lot of times, I get the question of, well, what is driving this trend? You know, what supports this trend? And it's a mix of several things. It's a mix of, we're anticipating a 1.4% population growth in the region, where we've got a strong regional economy. We assume that that is, will continue. We've got, although the energy sectors have recently, you know, have heard, had a recent downturn, we expect that to pick up. And we have a lot, we have a lot of commuters through Kelowna National Airport, International Airport, to northern B.C. and northern Alberta, and we expect that that will continue in some form. Tourism, obviously, is a major draw for everyone, from Assoias to Salmon Arm. And we, our focus has been, and will always be, as a regional airport, we support low-cost carriers. We have a recent carrier that has started up with us, and we hope that there'll be more. So, the air traffic growth, we've cut it into two basic categories. We have the lower portion, which is the brown section, is what we call general aviation. So, that's the small pilots, and also in there are the charter movements as well that are seasonal. And the blue area is our regular scheduled flights. So, you can see back in the early days, the peaks in the scheduled traffic was WestJet coming onboard in Kelowna, which was, which has been great for us. And so, we anticipate this steady growth at 2%. Again, I think that that's a mid-range growth pattern that we're seeing here. So, a lot of people in the direct proximity of YLW have expressed concern about noise over the years. So, you can see at the, at the top, what this is, I won't get into the details because I don't understand them myself, but it's, basically, these are noise, cumulative noise counters for, you know, all of the flights arriving, departing on an annual basis. You can see that, just looking at it, is that the noise is widespread. And moving forward, it's, the noise is going to be much more concentrated to a narrow gap. And that's really, there's a couple of things associated with that. One is, just the new technology and the aircrafts themselves are much quieter these days than the past. There's a lot of improvements in the engine. Plus, there was a, earlier this year, there was a realignment with TransCanada, Transport Canada, on the flight patterns. So, it's a, and how they access the airport. So, one thing that I've learned in coming to the airport is, it's almost like a highway, roadway intersection in the sky, where you go to a certain coordinate and you come in. And what they've, what they're encouraging now with a lot of the airlines is that they're, they're gliding in a lot more, as opposed to accelerating in. So, that is, contributes to the reduction in the noise as well. If there's any questions as it goes through, please stop me.
It's quite fascinating.
So, the way we approach this master plan is, we sort of work back from the runways, and then we move into like the taxiways, and then into the airport terminal building, and then to the, what we refer to as groundside, all the parking and access, whatever. So, the airside capacity for the runway, so we have, right now, obviously, we run a, whoops, yep. Right now, we run off of a single runway and a single taxiway. So, this talks to the runway capacity. And the two, the two lines there represent two different types of scenarios for the pilot's landing. The bottom line is, our runway capacity is 46 flights in an hour. And this is based on the, having a, sort of a winter condition, where the fog is in the valley, low hanging, and it, they require instrument landing. And as you can see, it's almost double that in summer days when the skies are clear. So, a lot of it has to do with weather conditions. But what this told us, this analysis here, is we don't really need another runway, we don't really need a, for capacity purposes, we don't really need a longer runway, as you'll see in the next slide. We actually, our runway, actually, we have a capacity to have a non-stop flight from Kelowna to Frankfurt. So, that's a, really, the runway is a non-issue for us in terms of capacity. And we would love to have those non-stop flights. However, they're, they're, we're regulated by Transport Canada, and one of the things that they've adopted in their, their new specifications is much more emphasis on landing safely. So, what you're looking at here at the, at the far ends, the brown areas there, is that what they insist on having is a, what's called a runway and safety area. Not unlike, say, a truck runaway type thing on, you see on the TransCanada Highway or something like that. So, this basically says, if, in the, in the off chance that a plane overshoots a runway, it'll, it'll come to rest safely in this gravelled area, which is designed to take that additional weight and whatever, and stop, hopefully stop the aircraft safely. So, this, this will be one change that will require a bit of a runway extension, as well as this graded area beyond the runway. So, the main, just like a parking lot for a building, and we have a parking lot for planes. So, there's two types of parking per se. Is that the typical, the plane comes in and pulls up to a loading, unloading bridge, and that's the ideal scenario for us. But we get into situations where if a plane is parked overnight, or if it's, if it's, for whatever reason, it has an extended stay, we want to get them off that loading bridge and park them. So, what our plan, 2045 plan, is telling us is that we're going to get one or two more terminal gates with loading bridges, but we also need five additional remote parking stands to get the planes off the loading bridge and allow for another flight coming in. So, what you're seeing here is a couple of different options here that, we haven't landed on either one at this point in time. The one on the bottom left is, you can see the gray area, and if I can point to it for a sec. So, this is the existing terminal in here, and this is our planned terminal expansion, which, as you can see, I'll talk to in a minute, but it, basically, the plan is to double it, the size of it. Similarly, this here is an option that sort of wraps around the terminal building in the bottom left, and the one on the bottom right is much more linear, which probably is more conducive to allowing for future growth. Into the terminal building. What you'll see in the, in the, this main brown, so this is basically the existing terminal building here, as it's, as it is. This brown area in here is a major expansion renovation that is ongoing today. This is a, under the current program, this is about a $30 million expansion of the terminal building, and it's redoing all the airline offices and right up to the front check-in This is, as I said, it's ongoing, its planned completion is probably the end of next year. And what this is going to do for us and the general traveling public is, it's going to be enhanced security for all of the bags that are getting checked in, as well as, it's going to increase the capacity and throughput of the baggage handling by 400%. So, this will be well, positioned as well for the future. The other major, and, sorry, under the existing program as well, for those of you who have traveled through the airport, you would have seen a couple of other things that we've done in this current program, and one was a major renovation of our whole concession area in there, and sort of improving it, upgrading it, and with a lot more emphasis on, on local, we've partnered with, with local companies and that to provide Okinawa products, as opposed to just, no offense, but genuine, but made in Japan type, made in China type merchandise. So, the, the major thrust to this air terminal building expansion is on the right, or the south end of the terminal, that's where most of the major building expansion is going to happen, which will, when this is built out, the intent is going to be, the south side of the terminal building is going to be all regional departures and arrivals. So, it'll be like other airports where it's, departures and arrivals are through the same gates, where now, where they're very separated for us, which means further walking distance for passengers or whatever. So, this will enable a person coming in off of a regional flight, which constitutes probably about 80% of our traffic, is the regional traffic. It'll allow them to come in, it'll pick, they'll have new baggage carousels by claim area right there. We will relocate all of the rental cars, the, and all the tourist information place down at that south end, so it'll be all in one area, and it'd be much more efficient. Then, when that is done, the next step is the north end of the terminal, we're going to renovate and do a minor building expansion up there, and that'll be to accommodate all of our international traffic up there. So, it's a, it's a much more logical split between the international and the regional traffic.
Is your timeline on the south end?
I'm sorry?
What's the timeline on the south end expansion?
What we want to do is, we want to have all of the design done in the next three years, in preparation for starting construction in 2020. So, I would expect that that south end, however, we haven't, again, we're still at 30,000 feet here in our planning, but I would expect that south end building expansion take the better part of five years, probably. So, this is our bible for determining how we want to build out and when we want to build out this, our terminal building. So, on the left, we've got all of this list. What we've done is broken out the different components of the terminal building. You've got the concourse area, check-in counters, bag claim areas, and whatever. And we looked at those in terms of, what have we got today? And what do we need tomorrow in terms of anticipated growth? So, you can see the red areas, and the timeframe again is 2016 out to 2045, the red areas define the areas where our, our demand is going to exceed our capacity. And you can see some of those exist today, like the, what they refer to as the whole room space is our departures lounge, which, if any of you have been traveling in peak times, you can see it gets, it gets ridiculously congested there today. So, that, and then the yellow is going to be, we're getting close to capacity, and the green is, we're, we're okay for now, but we're, we're starting to approach capacity. So, this is how we will, one of the tools that we'll use to program how we build out these different spaces in the future. So, moving into groundside operations here, along with this building expansion, increased traffic, obviously, there's going to be increased need for parking. The basic assumption we're making here right now is that we want to maximize our, our surface parking. We did, we do have a, kind of a placeholder in there for a parcade, but given the, the cost is pretty prohibitive of a, of a parcade, and, you know, it may be a very long-term solution, but not a short-term solution for us. The intent is to bring the buses and shuttles into the terminal more. You can see that we've, that green space running north to south there is the old CN rail line that's pretty much almost pulled up now. And we've, we've called it a recreation corridor, you know, and once it's, gets the proper funding, who knows what it's going to be? It could be a bikeway, it could be a pedestrian way. It may even be a transit route in the long-term future, but we want to protect that corridor for that purpose. Down in the bottom there, just off the intersection of the highway and our main access off Airport Way, you see this Royal Star Plaza. This is currently, phase one of this is currently under construction, where they're building an Esso gas station, a convenience store, where in, they're introducing a new franchise out of Ontario called Freshy. So, that's the phase one to that. Phase two, which hasn't had permanent approval as yet, but the plan is to build a car wash and other commercial businesses, yet to be determined. With the intent there is, it could be one-stop shopping if, for valet customers, it could be, take your car in, you can get an oil change, you can get it washed, and it'll be all ready for you when you come, come back from your destination. One thing that's not really shown on here, but it is a current, it's an issue today, and it's going to, it's going to get worse before it gets better, is our whole intersection and access to the airport. It's not unusual today during peak times during the day to experience a 15 to 20-minute wait to, just to get out onto the highway for, to come southbound. So, we're looking at, we've got some short-term initiatives in there to have a dedicated turn signal, we want to get, you know, dual left-hand turn lanes, but ultimately, the ultimate solution here is a, is a major intersection, which is, we're, we're starting now to talk to the ministry about, you know, cost sharing, that initiative. But that's, that's a few years away yet. So, again, all of these improvements here is to, to improve circulation to the, within the airport property and, and increase the parking in, well into the future. You can see there, there's a, running a parallel to the recreation corridor, there's Rutland Road Extension. That's a proposed extension, which may or may not provide an alternate access to the We're having a real focus on, on commercial land development. We're, we're adamant that we want to try and maintain as, as much as possible being a low-cost airport, where, unlike some of the major airports across Canada that have significantly increased their, their airport improvement fees, we're trying to hold ours as much as possible. In order to do that, we're stimulating a lot of what we call a non-aeronautical revenue. The, the area here, so, for reference sake, here's the terminal building, here's the main access. And the, at the north end of the airport, in that purple strip there, we're currently, we've got a contractor in there that is installing ruft-in services for five lots today, with a potential of, that whole area could get built out to perhaps seven lots. And we're going to be very selective as to who goes into this lot, so they have to be aviation support services, it's not mom and pops camping supplies, or whatever, whatever it is. So, we're looking at that, and we're looking at other areas that will come out, I think it's in the next slide, on both the west side and the east side. So, in February, that area directly south, that gold or brownish area there, is the golf course that we purchased in February. The intent there is not to become golf course operators, really, but this is a strategic decision for the future, to protect the adjacent lands for future expansion. So, my understanding is that the current operators will continue to operate for the next year or two, or whatever, but I also understand that it's a family-run business that they want to transfer it. So, at the time, we will look at, you know, do we want to contract out the management of it as a golf course, as we have no real short-term ambitions to develop that area of land. Similarly, the bluish area there, that on the south end of the runway and other adjacent areas, we're in negotiations for potential additional land acquisition there as well. So, again, we, you know, we've been, we've been on this trail for a while now, you know, stirring up interest, making, you know, creating awareness, and we're using the SurveyMonkey tool, and we've accumulated several comments to date. So, we're taking all of these comments and compiling them, and we would certainly appreciate any of your input as to how, how we can make the airport better in the future.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Stevens. It's quite interesting, you're very ambitious plans, and I'm sure that, considering how quickly things change in, you know, over a couple of years in, in the world, apparently, you know, that you're going to have to obviously look at things again. I heard on the radio this morning on my way in here that 50% of, of the jobs that kids will get now that are in school have not even been thought of yet. So, things change very quickly, and, and it looks like you're anticipating having some adjustments as necessary. I just want to tell you that 25 of our local residents flew out of the, of the Kelowna Airport yesterday. The getaway gals, they have gone to, flown over to, to Spain to go on a walk. And I got a picture this morning on something, Facebook or something, of them sitting on the plane drinking wine, so I guess they're well on their way.
Looks great.
So, thank you very much. I'll just see if council has any questions. Councilor Rhodes?
Thank you, Mayor McCordough. Well, thanks, Ed, appreciate the, the update. Success stories are always good to hear, and I, I know one of the councils in Kelowna, and I guess the financial numbers are pretty strong as well, the future looks good and all those positive things. So, congratulations on that. I want to ask you a purely selfish question. We have a, an airport in Assoias that consists of a runway right now, and we have, over the years, a fairly strong contingent of local people that are asking to, you know, develop and progress the airport, and we've always run up against so many obstacles, and it's, it's still a, you know, a work in progress plan for us and that kind of thing. I hate to put you on the spot, but I'm wondering if you could maybe comment on, on our airport and how it fits with your plans, or are we working against you or with you, or how small regional airports fit into your overall planning and that type of thing?
Yes, you did put me on the spot. Thank you very much.
Well, it's perfectly okay to say I can't answer it.
You know, and you're personally, you know, you're, you're asking the wrong guy. And I could take that question back, but, you know, my, and perhaps I should have explained this in the beginning. My role at the airport is basically to manage the development and delivery of capital projects. So we have an operations group, and I'm sure Sam would be able to explain it much more eloquently than I can. You know, and I know that there, there absolutely is a sort of a partnership with other airports across the province, what the specific roles are today, and how, you know, are those going to change tomorrow? I'm sorry, I can't answer that.
Fair enough, yeah.
But one, but one thing, and if I can go back for a second, and that when you talk, given, given us all these accolades about growth and, and numbers and everything, one thing I, I did not mention is, again, we, we assume this, this conservative passenger growth of 3%. The, the stars were really aligned last winter when there was poor snow conditions back east, good snow conditions here. We actually, during the winter period, we actually experienced an 8.6% growth over previous year. So that was a, a real, a real good story for us.
So that, that was more for ski destinations or winter recreation?
Well, I, I was surprised to learn, and then I have to, have to say that I'm, I'm new to the airport business in the last couple of years. I've learned a lot over the last couple of years about the airport business. One thing I didn't realize is that, first of all, being naive, I expected that, oh, yeah, okay, our peak season is summer. In actual fact, our peak season is winter, you know, and whether it's snowbirds and, but it, it's amazing how, you know, facilities like Big White attract people from apparently as far away as Australia. So I was quite surprised to hear that.
Well, thank you very much for your, for your presentation, and we would certainly encourage anybody who has any feedback to complete your survey online.
Please, Stu.
So thank you for coming down.
You're welcome. Thank you for having me. Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda, business number one is a report from our senior planner, Dilla Swain, about housekeeping amendments, zoning, and OCP.
All right, thank you. So the purpose of this report is to request that council gives guidance and direction on how to proceed with the proposed zoning amendment bylaw number 1085.1002016 and OCP amendment bylaw number 1230.182016. Since the adoption of the zoning bylaw and the OCP in 1998 and 2007 respectively, different amendments have been made to the bylaws. However, over the years, planning and development services staff have also identified various items that should be addressed, such as provisions that require clarification, out-of-date and missing information, and inconsistent formatting and naming conventions. As a result, the proposed amendments are intended to address some of these errors and minor issues and improve the overall clarity of the zoning bylaw and the OCP. So attached to this report, attachments one and two provide a summary of the proposed zoning bylaw and OCP amendments. While a number of the changes are fairly minor in nature, the following sections discuss some of the amendments in greater detail. So starting with the zoning bylaw, one of the amendments include accessory buildings and structures. Since the current definition of building heights for sloped roofs is based on the mean level between the eaves and the ridge, the overall height of some accessory buildings may be considerably higher than the permitted 4.5 meters. In some cases, depending on the roof pitch, the vertical distance would even allow a second store to be constructed. It is therefore proposed that the highest point of the roof cannot exceed 4.5 meters from the average finished grade for any residential accessory buildings. The intention of the provision of not allowing the use of an accessory building or structure for human habitation is to clarify that the establishments of detached accessory dwelling units is not permitted. Furthermore, from a streetscape perspective, accessory buildings or structures should not be placed in a front yard. That is, they should, they should be located behind the front face of the principal building. Moving on to solar energy devices. The zoning bylaw currently does not have any provisions that address solar energy devices. Over the recent months, staff has received some complaints regarding the scale of some installed solar energy devices. The regulations are meant to provide some standards that specifically address these devices. Number three, secondary dwelling unit floor area. Secondary dwelling units are currently permitted to occupy a maximum 100 square meters or 70% of the gross floor area below the main floor. However, it is proposed that the percentage be amended to 40% of an entire dwelling's gross floor area in order to align with B.C. Building Code regulations and to address the fact that some houses do not have basements. Regarding the number of required disability parking spaces, the current disability parking space rate is substantially higher compared to those prescribed in zoning bylaws from other jurisdictions. While some municipalities set the required number of accessible parking spaces based on different ranges of total required spaces, so for example, one accessible space per 10 to 50 required off-street parking spaces, other municipalities, such as the town, base the rates on percentages. Following a review of other zoning bylaws, a rate of 5% rather than 10% appears to be more reasonable. Number five, single-family or two-family dwellings in the R6, R7, and R7A zones. The R6 medium-density residential, R7 high-density residential, and the R7A high-density residential special zones are intended for denser types of development. While it is acknowledged that certain properties within these zones may contain an existing single-family or two-family dwelling, the purpose of the proposed amendment by adding existing as of the abduction date of zoning amendment bylaw number 1085.972016 is to clarify that these dwellings are only permitted if they have already been established and to prevent underutilization of valuable high-density lands. Moving on to mixed commercial residential uses in the C1, C2, C3, and C7 zones. The zoning bylaw currently states that dwelling units located above and below the first store of commercial uses are permitted in the C1 downtown commercial, C2 shopping center commercial, C3 highway commercial, and the C7 special commercial zones. However, in mixed commercial and residential buildings, it is rare for residential units to be located below commercial space. To staff's knowledge, the town does not have an example of an existing development where this is the case. Therefore, it is proposed that only dwelling units located above the first store of commercial uses are permitted. And moving on to the official community plan. So the first key amendment is related to the application of the multifamily residential development permit area. While the OCP considers duplexes as multifamily residential developments for the purposes of the multifamily residential development permit area, it currently also states that this DPA is required only for areas designated for medium and high-density residential use. Therefore, it is proposed that the wording under the application section be adjusted to state that the multifamily residential DPA is applicable to all lands within the town where multifamily residential development is permitted. And number two, related to the application of the industrial DPA. Similar to the proposed amendments for the multifamily residential DPA, clarification that all industrial developments, regardless of their land use designation, are included under the industrial DPA is needed. Even though majority of the industriozooned parcels are designated industrial on the OCP map, properties are zoned M3 special industrial are designated general commercial in the OCP. So the options for council. Option number one is that the council recommends bringing zoning amendment bylaw number 1085.972016 and OCP amendments bylaw number 1230.182016 to a regular open meeting. And option number two is that council requests additional information or revision to the amendment bylaws before proceeding further. And staff requests guidance and direction from council on how they wish to proceed with the proposed amendment bylaws. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wong. I'm just looking back, the, the zoning bylaw, I believe the last one was 1998. That's what it says.
That's the adoption date of the current zoning, zoning bylaw. There have been a number of amendments over the years.
So then the OCP was 2007 was the last time it was?
It's a little bit more recent, yes.
Sure. Is, how, I do remember that the regional district and the town did their OCP bylaws sort of at the same time, because there was a meeting of both at one point. I'm just wondering how often those need to be done? Or is this the way to move forward by doing, going through and making updates every once in a while? Does that make more sense?
Well, a number of municipalities, of course, there are, you know, the regular amendments to both the zoning bylaw and the OCP. But a number of municipalities over, over time would notice that there are certain items that would need to be updated. So they would make these changes as part of a housekeeping amendment.
No, I, I think that makes sense than going through the whole thing again. Counselor Rhodes, then Counselor King.
Dilla, I'm wondering if we can have a conversation about number six.
Sure.
The mixed residential. If I read that correctly, is that, that, so the zone, zones that you have listed from 1, 2, 3, and 7?
Yeah.
That's pretty much all of the downtown commercial, right?
The downtown commercial is C1. So the other, the C2, C3, and C7 zones, they're, they're, they're the other commercial zones outside of the downtown area.
Okay, so, so the proposed change is to eliminate the opportunity for below-business residential occupancy, like for a business owner if he wanted to live below. And the logic for doing that is we don't have any of that?
We, well, to staff's knowledge, there aren't any buildings that, where this is the case, where residential is on the ground floor and commercial is up above. Oftentimes, in mixed-use buildings, it's always having the commercial uses at the, at the, you know, at the street level and having the residential uses above the commercial space. So this is usually the case that, that we see in these types of mixed-use buildings. And so this is why we're proposing to just allow the dwelling units above the commercial, above the first store of commercial use.
Okay, so just a couple of comments. So I do know a couple myself where that is, is in existence. I don't think it's being used, but I think the building has been designed that way. The one that's occupied by Desert Sun right now used to be a commercial, I think a doctor chiropractic building, and there is a residence underneath that particular building. But the bigger picture is, is, I'm just wondering about the logic for changing it, because then it would eliminate the opportunity, or at least, you know, a, a proposed area. You know, if a guy wanted to open up a business, and he wanted to live underneath it, he'd have to come to town and go through all these changes and everything again. And I'm just wondering, it seems pretty harmless having it in there right now, and why would we change it if it has no effect on anything? I'm not trying to be combative. I'm just trying to understand the reason for going through the change.
Yeah, I think you've got a point. Quite frankly, I didn't consider the, the possibility that it would be the owner-operator who was residing on the ground floor. So that's an excellent point. I would be concerned about people exercising that option if, in fact, we kept it in the zoning bylaw on the C1 zone. I, I think there could be issues with that. You're, you're passing somebody's, you know, living room at ground floor. So I don't think it fits well there, but I think in other zones, we, we should take a, a second look at what you're saying.
Counselor King?
Thanks, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did you, were you, okay.
Can you write the number 37 in your proposal down there about not having to talk to the highways minister with the changes you're making?
For that one, we're, let's see, so that is related to, under the general regulations section. Because right now, the Highway Act has been changed to the transportation, to the Transportation Act. There are Ministry of Transportation, there are also different instances where they would need to give approval to different types of projects. So right now, the way that's worded, we, we need to change that. It's so not only just for zoning bylaw amendments within 800 meters of a controlled-access highway intersection that they need to give approval for, but certain, for certain types of subdivision, as well as development permit applications, MOTI, they need to give approval to as well. So we feel that this is more of a procedure-related type of provision that would be more suitable under the town's land use procedures bylaw.
I see. You're removing this whole section, so you're implementing parts of it other places?
Under the land use procedures bylaw, we feel that it is more suitable. Because right now, the way that this provision is, it only captures one of the several instances where MOTI needs to give approval. So we would also like to make sure that, you know, any subdivision applications or development permit applications, that these are captured under, you know, under the land use procedures bylaw, rather than just focusing on the zoning bylaw amendments.
So if I had a restaurant on Main Street and I wanted to expand outside, I could just talk to the town instead of highways?
If, if you're developing a restaurant and you require a zoning bylaw amendment, and it's within 800 meters of a, of a provincial highway, then MOTI needs to give approval as well.
Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Campbell?
Thank you, Mayor McCordough. Speaking of number four for a moment, the number of required disability parking spaces, bringing it from 10% to, to 5%, when we looked at comparable to other municipalities, was there much focus on the demographic, just looking at our age demographic?
I, I have taken a look at a number of zoning bylaws from municipalities. For example, White Rock, North Vancouver. So I think these are, you know, municipalities where the demographics are more similar to ours, and even theirs, their rates are much lower. A lot of them, they do base it on the, you know, base it on the ranges. And even then, looking at in comparison, their rates are much lower. So even if we were to reduce it to 5%, it is still a bit higher compared to a lot of other jurisdictions. It's just that right now, 10%, I mean, if, let's say if there's a development that requires a parking lot with 100, 100 parking spaces, 10 of those spaces would have to be accessible parking spaces. So it is quite a considerable number. Yeah. So we have taken a look at, yeah, other municipal bylaws.
And looked at sort of the needs within our own community as well?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So these have all been good points that have been brought up. Yeah, I, I remember years ago, there were no, you know, handicapped or accessible parking places. And now, all of a sudden, there seem to be a whole ton of them. So I, I totally agree that this should be, should be looked at. That being said, we are certainly known for providing accessibility in our community. So we want to make sure that we continue with that. Mr. Manco?
Just to clarify, your item 30 in terms of solar energy devices. So this is a new, new little, new section to the, to the zoning bylaw?
It is.
And just for clarity, because I know we had a situation that happened here in town in the last six months. The, the current, what you're proposing here only allows solar panels on roof, in residential areas, only on the rooftops, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so we, we wouldn't allow what I would refer to as a signboard type of structure holding solar panels?
No, not in the residential or commercial zones. That is not being proposed, yeah.
So what do people have to do now when they are going to put solar panels on so that we have some type of control over people with their solar panel installation? So they know that they can only put it on their roof? Do they have to get a building permit?
A building permit is required. But right now, you know, some, in some of the residential properties, there have been cases where the, the panels are not attached to the roofs themselves. So we don't have any provisions or regulations around type or, you know, height, size of these structures right now. But they are considered as a structure and therefore a building permit would, should be required for these types of devices right now.
But the, those types of structures are not allowed in, in residential areas?
It's, it's, well, right now, it's, this is absent in our zoning bylaw. There is nothing that prohibits these devices from being installed right now. So that's why we would like to introduce these, yeah, provisions so that we can, you know, say, you know, these are permitted in this area, but not in this area. And how, you know, in terms of the heights and, and size of these structures.
Okay, thank you.
I think it's absolutely necessary. I understand that, that if you are wanting to put these on your roof, that you need to be extremely careful of the load bearing, because there's an added weight. So that's probably why the building inspector and someone needs to get involved. Council King?
To the same point, is there any amount, could I cover my whole roof if my roof is strong enough?
Right now, based on the provisions that we are, that we are recommending, we don't have any roof coverage of the panels.
If it's three feet above the roof, I could cover the whole, like 20 by 30 feet?
Yes, as long as it doesn't extend past the, past the edges of the roof.
And with this new bylaw, will it affect the people that have them in place already?
These are for new devices that will be installed moving forward, yes.
Okay, anything else? So what is it that, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Would this have an impact on the windmill-type energy sources? Their solar?
Um, right now, we're just, these are provisions are just for solar. We haven't looked into other types of renewable energy devices.
Okay, good, thank you.
So what is it that you require from council? Have you heard some concerns? And did you want a recommendation, a motion? Or is, are, will this be brought back?
Options one or two?
Yeah, well, I, I don't know.
The, what they're looking for, or is this some feedback from council? Like, my assumption is you've heard some feedback that they're just looking for a direction to bring it back to a regular council meeting for, for adoption.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, so we need a motion to do that?
I'll make the motion that you bring it back to a regular open meeting.
Thank you. Will we have a second for that? Council Rhodes, thank you. All in favor? Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
When would that be?
Two weeks from now.
Would there be an opportunity to review it before then? Or do you want to just do it in the?
Well, yeah, the concern, in terms of that, we could do that. Though it's been a month, but we could do that.
Or alternatively, in the report, you would highlight the changes that were made based on this particular meeting.
Is that okay? Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much. If that's the end, end of this agenda, then could we have a motion to adjourn, please? Thank you. Campbell Rhodes, all in favor? Thank you very much. It's not on. You've, you've blown.